It is 10 o'clock and the Curville City Council is in order for this special called meeting. And we go to our first item, Resolution Number 07-2020.
Yes, the city attorney presented this.
Okay.
Resolution Number 07-2020, a resolution amending Resolution Number 01-2020, which ordered a general election for the offices of Mayor, Councilmember Place 3, and Councilmember Place 4 by postponing the election until November 3, 2020, establishing procedures and dates for the election, and providing other matters related to the subject.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. This will basically follow along what you've previously done, and you ordered that the election be postponed from May 2 until November. This resolution essentially amends your previous order for that election that you all adopted in January. So you might remember a lot of activity from the Governor over the last few weeks, as can be imagined. Back on March 18, he issued a proclamation that essentially authorized all political subdivisions in the state that otherwise would hold elections in May, that they had the authority to postpone those until November. And so that's essentially what your previous action did, and this will solidify that. So it does that. It'll, your election now will occur on Tuesday, November 3, for the positions of Mayor, Councilmember Place 3, and Councilmember Place 4, current office holders. So you all will hold over until that election. And you all simply will remain in place. This does not, this action today does not extend the filing deadline, and so in other words, we're not opening it up for anyone else to apply to run. And the ballot actions that have already taken place will remain in place. So, and then, of course, I think Shelly may have received some applications for ballot by mail. If she did that with respect to age or disability, those will remain in place. If she got any of those because someone was going to be out of the county on the election day, then they will have to reapply for those if that condition will remain in November. So based upon your previous action, I recommend that you adopt this resolution before you this morning.
Mr. Mayor, I will recommend that we adopt Resolution Number 07-2020 to replace Resolution Number 01-2020.
Okay, all right.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion, second discussion?
Just to clarify, it's not to replace, but to amend it. So it's, there is a difference.
Oh, you're right. Thank you. That's right. Thank you. And so we'll change that word to amend.
Okay. All in favor of this resolution? If you'd like it to be known by the raised hand? And it is unanimous?
Mayor, let me add just a footnote to that. We may need to take, or you all may need to take additional action via resolution that will amend all this to solidify dates and times and locations, but that'll come probably sometime this summer.
It'll come sometime, when?
Probably this summer. I mean, I would suggest, probably July or August, just to match up with what we normally do, the timing that we normally take with respect to upcoming elections.
Okay, all right. Okay, now we come to briefing, possible action related to the city, COVID-19.
So with this item, we've got the Chief that'll give an update on all the different activities. I know that you all also heard the public announcements yesterday from the Mayor and others, so you're pretty much up to speed on everything, but there are a few things that we'd like to share with you this morning. So Chief?
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. As the City Manager has stated, you all have watched in the news, we're all aware that the COVID-19 cases continue to rise, not only in Texas, but in the U.S. and the world. As of 6:00 PM yesterday, Texas has conducted 50,000, approximately 50,600 tests, for a confirmed 4,669 COVID-19 cases, which equates to about 70 deaths in the state of Texas. On March 31, Curville was notified of its first COVID-19 case. And on yesterday, there has been a second confirmed case in Kerr County, not in the city of Curville, but in Kerr County. So from that, I would like to just kind of highlight a few notable actions that have transpired since your last briefing. On Monday, March 30, Peterson Regional opened up a drive-through screening facility at the Kerr County Youth Event Center. And to give you an idea of what that, what has happened since that time, on Monday, they screened 10 patients, and all 10 were forwarded to labs for a test. Tuesday, an additional 10 patients, five were forwarded to labs for tests. Wednesday, 12 patients, 10 were forwarded to labs for tests. And then on yesterday, they screened a total of 15, 14 were forwarded to labs for tests. Peterson is getting those test results back in about 24 hours, and so far, all have been returned negative. Okay? So by your next briefing, I should be able to provide you real-time numbers for not only what Peterson is doing, but the total amount of COVID-19 tests that are taking place here in the city of Curville. And I would like to remind our citizens that screening is done by appointment only. And I think I've placed at each one of your places a flow chart, and it's on the website, so our citizens can actually go there and see, you know, the process that they have to go by to get screening and then a test if it's needed. Just an update on our call center. We're averaging about 30 COVID-19-related calls up until the Governor announced the executive order, GA14. Afterwards, in the call center, we saw those COVID-19 calls double, and the most frequently asked question was, is Kerr County on a lockdown? And I think that's been made pretty clear, that the answer is no. So finally, the city continues its planning and preparation, and is currently operating in Phase 5 of our pandemic plan, which simply means we're at the maximum level of readiness in our planning and preparation with our personnel, equipment, facilities, policy, policies, and planning. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have for me on COVID-19.
Chief, I've got just a couple, and it has to do with the testing center, obviously, but the, I want our citizens to, and I know it's on your chart, but if you could just kind of go through it again also, it's not a matter of whether you have enough money to pay for the test. There's, if they think they need to be tested, they can go through these protocol, even if they are financially strapped at this time, and still get tested. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's a process that they can contact, if they don't, if they're uninsured or don't have a primary care physician. They can contact Peterson, which will make, run them through the additional, first is screening process.
So they can either do it through Peterson or San Antonio Metro Health, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And again, I would just encourage, if you're watching this and you're not sure, get on our website, and you can find this information, because I don't want people not getting tested because they think they can't afford it.
Thank you. Great question, and there's two options for them on that.
Chief, did you have another question? Can you further clarify the difference that you cited between the numbers on screening and then testing that was sent? And just, so if they're screening, and you're saying that the screening was not sent for tests, that means they, that they determined not to screen for COVID-19 specifically?
Yeah, I don't want to wade too much into the medical aspect of it, but when they report to the, when they get the referral to actually go to the screening center, then it's my understanding what Peterson is doing, they're screening for a various number of influenza-type viruses. And if that triggers a need for a COVID-19 test, then they're referred, that sample is sent on to the lab to be tested for COVID-19.
Perfect.
And from that lab test, then it will be determined if it's positive or negative, and so far, all the tests, at this point, have been returned back negative.
Except for the one.
Except for the one?
Well, I'm, yeah. Well, I'm talking about what's happening at the testing center.
At the center, sure.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The numbers that I'm giving you today is simply what has taken place since Monday, when Peterson opened up the screening facility at the Youth Event Center.
Follow-up on Gary, I would also like to thank you and whoever worked on getting this clarified. It answers all of the questions that I was asked from citizens. So I know this wasn't straightforward to put together, but the answer is pretty straightforward now, and I appreciate the time and effort that one is.
I was just curious, I know that our first case did not need hospitalization here, did our comfort person, they're just self-quarantined at home?
I don't have the details on that, Councilmember. We just received notification of that late yesterday afternoon. In fact, it has not been placed up on the DSHS website, but I can get that information. I'll be more than happy to share it with you.
Well, if you, I was just wondering if you knew it. And I would like to say thank you, too, for the instructions. This was, that's good work.
It's a joint effort between us and Peterson, but it's what has to happen, you know, the community has to come together to, you know, make sure we meet the needs of our community.
Yes, thank you very much for this, because it helps us, because we are on the streets, well, not anymore, but we are at least getting calls and emails from friends and neighbors, so that helps a lot. And I had a question about when we discovered the one case, the question that I got from neighbors and all were, did that person expose other people in the hospital, or, so some of that information would help, not confidential information, of course, but the fact that that person did not report to work, but quarantined or got tested prior to that, so no one in the hospital was exposed, or, I think that's, the next question people ask is, well, where was that person prior to having symptoms or deciding they needed to be tested?
That's a great question, Councilmember. I don't have the specifics on it, I think, but it's my understanding that Peterson identified it quickly, took the necessary appropriate actions to make sure that they limited exposure, but the specific details on the chain of events that occurred, you know, I don't have that, and I think we would, I can, I'll certainly be.
Well, it's just something in the future. I think actually, the City Manager kind of filled in some void for me, which was, the person took responsible action themselves, knowing that they probably should get a test prior to going into work. So that was real key, to know that, just knowing that they did the responsible thing, which I'm sure, if you've got symptoms, don't go into work, you know.
Yeah, the information I have so far is that the actual individual recognized it quickly, reported it to Peterson quickly, and Peterson took the necessary appropriate actions to make sure that.
But the, the other piece of that is that the, and this has been said publicly, the individual had traveled, and when, when that individual came back, as a healthcare provider, she realized the symptoms.
Right.
It was almost certainly not contracted in Kerr County.
Right.
Any other questions for the Chief?
Just, thank you.
Thank you for the update.
I will say one thing before I leave, and that's one thing that I've noticed the last few days, is it certainly seems like there's less traffic on our streets than our citizens are heeding to the advice that it's not only coming from the city and the City Council, the City Manager, and the CDC, but, you know, it looks like there's definitely a reduced traffic volume on our roadways.
Chief, I would agree with that statement, and again, my fear, because it's, my fear personally is, it's pretty easy for the first three or four days, and then I think we're really going to have to be diligent and pay attention, is starting next week, and when, you know, we start going a little stir-crazy. So that's what I would really caution the citizens, is this is not a two or three-day situation. We need, we're in this for the long term, and we need to get mentally prepared for that.
Great.
And the best way, thing we can do for everybody is stay home.
Yeah, I think the thing that we have to keep emphasizing with our community and citizens is, you know, there's some pretty good guidelines in terms of what we should do with following good hygiene, social distancing, and now, if you don't have to be out, stay home. That's probably your best advice, if we can get them to eat.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
So Mayor, before we move on to the executive session, I know that Councilmembers Ickner and Seagerman are working on a food project that I think the community probably want to know about.
Okay, all right. You ready?
Okay, yes, yes. Several things have been done, and we just, we have a population out there that we need to reach, and so we need the community help in this. And it can all be done by phone, and that's what we're going to be asking. We have three entities that are still, that are giving food, and I have the hours, we will post them, we'll get them to Stewart, get them on the city website, we'll get them out on all social media that we can. Mount Wesley, the Mustard Seed Ministry, Light on the Hill, is open 2 to 4 on Mondays. And what they would like everyone to know is, you do not have to get out of the car, it's drive-through, so there's no personal contact, they'll take the groceries, they'll put them in your trunk, and they just want people to know to still come, they will not be closed. Also, Light on the Hill will be giving a frozen entree to everybody that comes through. Their kitchen is producing food, doing that at the, on the off-hours, and so they will have entrees to give away. So we want people to know that, and we're asking people, if you know of someone that might need the help, need groceries, and they're, maybe they don't know about it, or they don't want to step up and say, I need help, please encourage them. And we've also, let me give you two other entities, and then I'll give you a number. St. Vincent's DePaul, they will be open 2 to 4 on Mondays, on Wednesdays, 7 to 9, and on Saturdays, 9 to 11. And they are giving out groceries also. I don't know about an entree there. And then CAM is open for drive-through, both of these are drive-through again, so just like Light on the Hill, Mustard Seed, no personal contact. They will, CAM will be open 2 to 4 every day, Monday through Friday. And, well, post-phone numbers, I won't give those now. Then, we have set up, through the city, a food hotline, and that number is going to be a 3-0, of course, 258-1234. Don't know how they got that number, but that's great.
It's Charley's magic.
That's good.
Thank you, Charley.
So if anyone can call us, we're going to man these hours, or man this phone, next week, 9 to 3. So anyone can call in with questions, it's kind of like the hotline, but it has more to do with food. And so anyone can call in, ask questions, we'll get you to somebody. The Mustard Seed Ministries at Mount Wesley will deliver, if we have people that are homebound or don't have transportation, they will deliver food. So we just need to get them paired up, and we'll need phone numbers, and just some very basic information. Another thing that I think it's important to say is, they do not ask about citizenship. That is not a requirement to get food. So this is a time when we want everybody who needs it to get food. So other questions may be asked, how many in your family, just some other items of that nature, but a citizenship question will not be asked. So please spread that word. Then, in addition to that, we have set up with the Community Foundation, a fund called, it's Through Hill Country Strong, but this is the Food Relief Fund. And so through that fund, then, we are asking the population, our citizens, to make donations. So all you have to do, go on the website, and you can make a donation, specify food relief, call them, lots of ways to get the money to them. If you are interested in doing that, and you will, that money will go directly to these organizations to be used for food. These three organizations all get their food from the San Antonio Food Bank, and the San Antonio Food Bank gets all their food from HEB. So we need 10,000 shout-outs to go to HEB for what they're doing, not only for Curville, but just for our whole community. The other thing that I think it's important to remember, that these organizations are serving not just people in the city of Curville. This, we're a hub, and these organizations, one of the things they do ask people is where they're from, Bandera, Rock Springs Junction, Comfort, Center Point, Mountain Home, Harper, it's the whole area. So we're not, you know, it's not just our own city of Curville people. So they reach a great many people, their numbers more than doubled last Monday from the week before, and the question, when it was asked, why are you here, was, I've lost my job. So we have people that have never, ever in their life had to ask for food, so, and it's going to get worse, because, and sometimes, you know, I know our restaurants are open, and we're trying to support them, but when I talk to a couple of the restaurant owners, asking them if they had people that needed food, or had people that knew people who needed food, one of the answers that I got was, we have waiters and waitresses sitting at home. They're at home, the kitchen staff is still there, kitchen staff can still prepare, but the people that were serving people, they've lost their jobs, they're at home right now. So, so there's, there's people out there that we don't, we don't even think about, and that's what we need to do. We're just asking all of you to be our eyes and ears, call the center with numbers or with names of people, we'll help get food to them. Then on the other hand, those that feel like you've got a few extra dollars, we need them in, the Hill Country Strong Food Relief Fund, so, just, thank you.
And just as a reminder, the hotline's not open until 9 o'clock on Monday.
Monday, 9 to 3, all next week, 9 to 3, yes.
And the Mustard Seeds open from 1 to 3, the drive-through every Monday, 1 to 3.
Yes.
And I spoke with Beth, well, we spoke with Beth last week, they served 1,000 cars or families in the month of March, and they expect that to double. And so this fund will help, and, you know, it's kind of like a circle, the food bank brings food in, Beth gets it, but she has to pay for it. So if her funds run short, she can go to this Curville Relief Fund, Food Relief Fund, and that'll help her. So the donations are literally earmarked for food, and our nonprofits will be able to benefit from that, so.
And before you talk about the other, one other group that's handing out is the Doyle Center. And Clifton Pfeiffer was out there in the drizzle yesterday, they've got a drive-through again, they've got groceries, so no personal contact, drive up, just they, a little bit of information, a name, that kind of thing, and they will have food, too, and they're going to be out there 9 to 1 every day, so.
Every day. We've got a lot of things to do, we, we've created a flyer, we're going to try to get this out to anyone that can pass it on to people who can spread it out, we're going to try to get it on social media, Judy's talked to the Daily Times about, an announcement about it. So we're, it's really a matter of reaching these people who haven't the transportation or don't have already a way to get food. So it's a little bit of a challenge to find them, but we're determined to, so it's word of mouth sometimes, and anyway, I think we're, we're doing all we can do. I mean, it's kind of a changing, everyday scenario of what we thought was going to work, and perhaps we have to tweak it a little bit, so, but we're working on it.
Were you going to mention HEB?
HEB has started their Favor Delivery, which will also help, because it's literally going to be able to take food to, and there was an article in the paper, I think it's favordelivery.com is how you can access that, and I believe they are going to, in addition to non-perishable foods, also connect with the restaurants for those that can take hot meals. So it's a wonderful opportunity, and they actually are paying drivers, so if you're in need of a job right now, and you, you know, could qualify for a driver, get in touch with, it's either, it's 1-833-397-0080.
Could you give that number again?
It's, let's see, a senior support line will be available 11 to 3:00 PM at 1-833-397-0080.
And that's specifically for seniors?
It is, it is for 60 and up, yeah, I forgot to mention that, yeah.
One other thing I think we should mention is KISD, just 10,000 shout-outs to them, because they have kept up breakfast and lunch for their students. And these organizations here aren't going to ask you if you're getting food from KISD and say, well, if you are, you can't get food from here. So they're, and they're doing, I don't know their hours on theirs, but I do know the kids don't have to be with you anymore, which most of our, probably all of our, our students know that, but they just have to have proof that they have a student there. And, and I, I'm not sure, I thought maybe they were doing some consolidating of their pickup.
Yeah, there's four locations.
Yes.
They're not asking for proof of anything.
Okay.
They're just giving it out.
I think it's 9 to 12.
9 to 12?
I believe so.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's Daniels, Nimitz, Starkey, and Tally, I think, are those four locations.
Say it again?
It's Daniels Elementary School, Nimitz, Starkey, and Tally.
So all four?
I think it's BT Wilson and Tally.
Okay, just those two?
No, I mean, instead of Starkey.
Oh, okay.
I think they tried to geographically space.
If you get on the KISD website, though.
Yeah, and it was on, it was on the press conference yesterday as well.
It was on the press conference yesterday.
Well, one of the ways that people are stepping up, I had an email or message yesterday from a friend who, he and his retired friend want to volunteer as drivers, and the retired friend was head of litigation division of one of the largest law firms in Texas, and the other guy that messaged me was with a major oil company in eight different countries. But, you know, they're saying, hey, I can drive, I can get some folks some food, so that's great.
Oh, good.
All right, any other word?
Well, I had one more thought about, this is not food-related, but it's rent-related. And I've talked to the City Manager and the City Attorney just discussing it, and other cities have considered waiving the eviction process for a period of time, like through the end of April, and I know we are currently following what the Governor's recommendation is. You know, my concern is not so much commercial, but residential, the multifamily landlords and how we might can help them so they could help tenants through the month of April at least, because I know some single parents who will probably have a hard time paying rent. And I'm just concerned about particularly that segment of our market. I know a lot of other landlords are being very generous, commercial landlords, but I, I worry about the apartment complexes, I personally know, have tenants that are month-to-month, I mean, they're literally, so I know Austin has, and the other cities have proposed some ideas, most evictions are halted across the state until at least April 20th, that's the Texas Supreme Court order. However, some have gone as far as to say, Austin has instituted a 60-day grace period. So I don't really have a suggestion right now, per se, except that I'd like to just see what you think about it, if we might want to think about it some more and come back another day and have another, a concrete suggestion on how we can, and maybe it's a matter of identifying where these particular places might be, it might only be a handful of landlords that would need some assistance or some guidance from us on how to keep their tenants, you know, in the.
I'm certainly interested in that, I think that's going to be more than just a discussion at this meeting.
Right.
So I think if you want to instruct staff to do some research into that and get back to us, but I don't think that's something that I'm prepared to discuss at a meeting today.
Right, no, and I knew that. In fact, I just had this discussion yesterday for the first time with, with Mark, so I, I didn't, I just wanted to start planting the seed, and so, yes, I don't know who we should, which person should we instruct to?
Well, Mike and I had a chance to talk about it, and there's, there's a good chance that that's going to be extended by a higher level of government, and even if we were to help, it wouldn't. even if we were to help, it wouldn't be financial, we just don't have, in fact, I'm going to brief you all, or Amy is, on the fourteenth about the shortfall that we're anticipating this year, and it's pretty significant, and all the things that we're going to be doing to cut budgets. Uh, so, um, something we can definitely look at, look at best practices and so forth, and then maybe do a little digging on what we think the federal government might do, or, or others.
Well, just having worked with, um, you know, a lot of information on homeless, I, I mean, that's just exactly how it happens. Uh, they have an accident on the job, they lose their job, and they can't pay rent. So, I, I see this as potentially adding to that list of homeless population, and I mean, some would be families, not just individuals. So, whatever we can do, and it may not be financial at all, it might just be, um, some guidance, or, or just looking into what other cities are doing and what the, what we can do. So, we can talk about it another day and think on it, and look at what other cities are doing and get back and talk some more about it.
Thank, thank you very much, and, uh, it's good to hear some more things that are happening. Uh, just one thing, I, I think we definitely will see an increase of homeless, homelessness coming out of this, just given the number of unemployed already. All right, um, do I hear a motion that we go into executive session?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session under Sessions five five one point oh seven two, deliberation regarding real property and five five one point oh eight seven, business prospect economic development.
All right, you got a second, all in favor, if I've been on by the raised hand, okay? All right. So we are now in executive session. At ten fifty-seven, we are out of the executive session, and there is no action to report, so we're adjourned.